Make a call for a trustee's regular meeting Monday, June 6, 2016 at 7:30 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda. Any additions or deletions? I myself like the new business levity backup electric inspector request.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended. Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Approval of minutes. I'll wait a minute if you want to get to it.
No, that's okay.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes 5-2, 2016; 5-26, 2016 workshops; 5-2, 2016 regular meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the 5-2, 2016; 5-26, 2016 workshops; and the regular meeting on 5-2 of 16.
Thank you. Motion by Treasurer Attenbacher, supported by Trustee Churchie. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Post. Motion passes.
I don't like to make the motion or support because it comes out of my office.
It's fine. Any public announcements?
Everybody remember, we have a big election coming up in August, so it's starting to gear up towards that.
And the only other one I'd like to make note of is the park pathway is paved now. I'll let DPW Superintendent Trombley tell about when it's going to be finished, but at least it's paved and it's usable at this time, correct?
I don't like that look.
I think they're just putting dirt and grass seed and stuff around the sides, but I'll let him finish that.
That is correct. Last week, the entire path, all the surfaces were paved. Shortly thereafter, we did complete a punch list. Met with a contractor on site today for a lot of the restoration areas and other areas that need final correction. It's kind of premature to say that the path is open and ready for use just until some of those areas are restorated. I would like to see the public refrain from using it, give it more time to set, and hopefully we can get the best of it out of it as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other public announcements? Public comment? Any public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Jan Patchnik. I have been here for some time. I've made some mistakes in the past because of my proud soul. The good Lord has impressed upon me to come and apologize to Mr. Trombley, Mr. Jappett, how I've handled myself regarding my property, made statements in public here that have offended you, and I just wanted to make that right. Not the first time that my proud head, fat head, if you will, has gotten me in trouble. And I've spoken to my pastor, and I'm a different individual, and was also a retired pastor, and found out that the way I was going with my legal matter here in Lenox without representation, going with some groups that gave me ideas that hammered on the system. And A, I didn't let go of my own attorney and was flabbing around by myself and my wife. So I want to apologize. We did hire today an attorney to help resolve this case in a peaceful manner as quickly as possible. It did take some time to get the things accomplished on my property, you know, as there's just a lot of things that need to be addressed. So hopefully, we can resolve this, like I said, in a peaceful manner as quickly as possible. Neighbors have come by and said my place looks like a park, even a police officer to another police officer. But, you know, no one's perfect. And again, I guess, apologize to you folk. Our property looks great. My wife is especially happy, you know. She's been praying for a while. Because of the accident I had in '99, my thought processes wasn't right, and so I built myself a retirement. That wasn't, my place wasn't the place to keep my retirement there and live off of. But no one has a perfect place. And I've been in the news, and I guess for the first time in the Bay Voice, and look confident, like I said, I'd just like to end this so we can get back on track, you know, trying to get our garden back going and try to live a life peacefully. I'm not looking to make complaints against people, you know, and hurt people, it's just not my thing. But my mom, they give me a trouble, so. Supervisor Trombley, I hope you accept my apology.
I do accept your apology. I thank you for it.
It's nothing I planned. It's something that I came to a conclusion with one pastor, another pastor, and I'd kind of say, hey, you need to get everything right, and this way we can sleep a lot better. Thank you very much. Would you want to make a comment?
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say I'm very proud of you and very happy to hear you coming along with everything.
All right, Jappett.
Yeah, thank you as well, and just wanted to confirm for the board that yes, indeed, Mr. Patchnik's attorney contacted our office today, and we asked that if he is going to be, Mr. Patchnik's attorney, that he file an official appearance with the court so it becomes of record, and then we, Mr. Dover of our office, who's been handling the case primarily, will be in touch with him to talk about where to go from here. It isn't scheduled until toward the end of the month to go back before the judge, so there is some time to have that discussion, and then we'll be able to report back to the board.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Janet Haraway. I know the election's coming up, and we're losing some very important people on our township board. Sorry to see you guys go, gals. I know there's new people who are running for your positions. I don't know the one. I know there's Mr. Marino, there's, is it Ices? Oh, is that, and I forgot what the third one is. I have to say, I've been trying to come into the meetings as much as I can, and I am very dismayed not to see these people here. For people who want to run for our township and don't take the time to come to the township meetings, it's pretty sad, outrightly sad. So I hope people remember that when they vote. Not that I'm for or against these people, but I think they should be taken into consideration when they vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Public hearing, 2016-2017 budget.
The public hearing part of the budget is for those in the audience to ask questions or make comments or whatever. The budget. I think I do believe there's copies back there.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, the 2016-2017 budget.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Do we need roll call on that? Attorney Jappett?
You've not told them about here.
Okay, thank you. So that would be it. I'm sorry, I can't see the glare.
It was 7:40.
7:40, okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing up then. Any discussion, any comments, any questions?
Can we just leave it open during the remainder of the meeting in case if he comes up with a question, we have to close it?
I believe I have to close it, ma'am.
At some point, you do need to close it so it's officially closed at a specific time, but certainly you can remain open to questions after you've voted.
Even when we get to the budget.
Right, I just don't want, you know, somebody might come and look through it and come across and feel like they can't ask something, so.
So we can close this public hearing, and then just if anyone has questions, let them talk.
Right. Assuming nobody's coming up at this point, then yes, proceed, we'll close the public hearing, but.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. And now moving on, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the board or public's request prior to the meeting, in which event, the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number 9 below. Approval of consent agenda shall be a majority roll call vote of those present in voting. We did have one item removed that we did place under 9C for everybody's reference, EMS report, Waste Management Presentation. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Do you want to do the amount of bills also on there?
Orders of bills in the amount of $196,372.33.
$196,372.33, thanks to you. Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
She was checking on White.
Sorry.
Mine was just off Carol. It's on now.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, Churchie?
Aye.
Attenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Number 9, items removed from consent agenda, let her see EMS report. Mr. White?
Good evening, board members. I just want to, I'm going to provide you copies tonight of my report, and would simply ask the board as well as the Waste Management Presentation this evening to remember that we do have a blood drive scheduled for here at the Township Hall on July the 7th from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So the public is encouraged and welcome to join us that day. Everything else in my report is pretty much routine, with the exception of something that we're very excited about, and that is the purchase of a new piece of equipment at the EMS. About two months ago, we set about the fundraising with the help of the Richmond Chamber of Commerce to purchase what's called a Lucas II mechanical CPR device. Briefly for the board and the public, what that device does is ensures mechanically very high-quality CPR for very long periods of time. That doesn't mean that EMS personnel won't still get there and start CPR, or firefighters won't still get there and start CPR on a patient. That will still all occur. This device is intended to take over after rescuers start to wear out a bit, and believe it or not, even the best trained, the best fit rescuers, after providing CPR for what can be 30 to 45 minutes, grow tired, and the actual compressions on the chest become less effective. What science has taught us just in the last few years is that even with all of the finest equipment that can be bought for EMS, and by the way, you're biased the finest equipment there is out there from a technology standpoint, even with all that equipment, if we don't continue to perfuse the brain well, provide the brain blood and oxygen very, very well for these long periods, that equipment really doesn't have the opportunity to work. So the device that we were looking at to purchase was about $14,000, and through efforts, like I said, by the Richmond Chamber of Commerce, by some memorial contributions from some folks who have passed over the last year, and through a very nice and significant-sized contribution from our neighbors here at Waste Management in our community, we were able to actually order the device last week. That was after about 45 days of fundraising, so that's pretty impressive when, like I said, the device is about $14,000. So after about 45 days of fundraising, we were able to order the device. It arrived about 4 o'clock this afternoon, and literally while I'm here, training has begun at our station on the device so we can get it deployed probably within the next 24 to 48 hours. So things are going very well. So with that, I want to invite Waste Management here. They have a presentation for us. And thank you very much. Waste Management's contribution to this effort was $2,000 from.
If Waste Management's pleased to present this check for $2,000 towards the Lucas II chest compressor CPR device to the Richmond Lenox EMS.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, if my agent staff did not get to see this thing firsthand, it's a great thing. It's CPR, it can be very strenuous, and this will take, hopefully save somebody's life.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate it. On behalf of, on behalf of the entire community again, I just want to thank Waste Management. The legacy, you know, of checks like this, that we're receiving, contributions like this we receive from the community are lives saved, and I don't know if a board or an organization, you know, can have any greater legacy than saying they contributed to saving a human life. So again, on behalf of all of us and on behalf of Lenox Township and all those we serve, thank you Waste Management for this contribution.
Thank you very much. No unfinished business at this time? Number 11, new business. Letter A, 2016-2017 budget.
Now, was the only change because of the last page being revised was the ones that were in yellow, the bright yellow? The EMS loan and the contract reversion?
Yes.
Fund 681, there was a change. We're at the bottom.
I want to thank everybody for participating in this again, and the department heads. Thank you for cooperation.
If I make a motion, does anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns about the budget numbers?
Karen, this seems to be done actually line item adjustments in the budget to separate motion.
Yeah, I know it's a lot to look at at a short amount of time because we didn't have these, the final clean copy for very long either, but what we are, we're always told from our board member is that your budget is a living document, so it can be changed at any time, you know, at a public meeting. So if there's something that one of us does come up with, or a resident comes up and says, well, why did you do this? Wow, you know, just a number of gut transfer. If there's a mistake or there's something that needs to be changed, we change it so it's not set in stone. I'm not sure what you, what we need for what you need first, so you go ahead and tell me.
You can do either one of them first, but there's line item 2015-16 line item adjustments, and there's 2016-17 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015-2016 line item adjustments.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchie, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion? Will you roll call on any of these? Deputy Clerk, please.
Churchie?
Aye.
Attenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2016-2017 budget.
Motion by Trustee Churchie once again, supported by Treasurer Attenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk, please.
Churchie?
Aye.
Attenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trombley?
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Thank you very much. Letter B, fire department floors scrubber purchase from Chief.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
I sent you all a cover letter along with some quotes that I received. As you well know, over the last two years, we've invested quite a substantial amount of money in apparatus bay floors at both stations, and one of the things that all the companies that bided on the project have advised us is that you have to continuously maintain these floors to get the life expectancy out of them. And their suggestion is to purchase a floor scrubber machine, and we have found just in the last year how long it takes a couple of guys to wash that apparatus bay floor, and it doesn't come out the way you expect it to come out. That being said, I went out and acquired several quotes from several different companies on purchasing a floor scrubber. It's the same style scrubber that is being used in the supermarket business, Meyer and Kroger and so forth, and car dealerships, so on and so forth. So I've acquired three quotes, one from Minuteman International at $9,845, Grainger Industrial at $10,840, and Southeastern Equipment, which is $54.50, and then Clean Freak, that's actually the name of the company, Clean Freak, and they're out of Appleton, Wisconsin, at $5,011.19. I, Clean Freak, supplied me some references, and I actually called those references, and nobody had a single negative thing to say. So, that being said, I'm requesting that the board, and by the way, I budgeted $7,500 in line item for this purchase in the current budget year, so I'm actually coming in under budget for the project. So this time, I'm requesting the board approve the fire department purchased the floor scrubber machine at the cost per the unit at $5,011.19.
Is this machine something that could be used here at the Township Hall as well?
There's a possibility. Kim and I would have to look at it. I would imagine so. It may just be a, because you can put different style pads underneath, scrubbing pads, depending on the surface. So I'm sure it's something, the biggest thing is the weight, you know, would have to be loaded in a trailer to be brought up here, which, again, that wouldn't be an issue, and that would be something, if we wanted to do that, that we would definitely, you know, provide that for a service, you know, for use up here at any time, so.
Now, the different companies, are they the same basic size machines?
Yes, yes. Everything was, included was the size, which is, don't quote me, but I believe 24-inch walk behind, and some of them you can purchase are propane-powered, and I didn't want to get into propane, and we got to worry about cylinders and that. This is strictly powered by batteries, comes with the battery charger, and the charger just operates off a regular 110 receptacle, so I don't have to have the electrician come in and put a 240 outlet in for us either.
What about warranties and?
Warranties were all the same, and I believe the warranty was, is a year. Yes, warranty is a year, Karen.
I know it's a great, it's a great thing to have, and it'll really take care of the floors, and like you said, it'd probably be used here except if you want to check on the ground, grounding first and stuff.
Absolutely.
But I just know that when they go down, they go down, and they're expensive, so, to get repaired. So I just want to know how, do they have a service plan, or do they have someone nearby that can come up?
They do have Michigan Service Tex in Southeastern Michigan and Lansing. They're based, and it'll be shipped from Appleton, Wisconsin.
And then a couple of people will be shown how to use it?
Everybody will be shown how to use it.
No, I don't want to say that. Not me. Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize Chief Fouchet to purchase a... Okay, I'll make a motion that we authorize Chief Fuchay to purchase a Clean Freak.
Floor scrubbing machine.
A floor scrubbing machine through Clean Freak at a cost of $5,011.19.
Support. Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Okay, Chief, next one.
Thank you.
Fire Department, 2016 stakeout gaming license.
It has been brought to our attention, third-handily, that when you hold even a 50-50 raffle now in the state of Michigan, you have to have a gaming license. Okay, so instead of ignoring this information that we received, again, third-hand, we decided to investigate and contact the state, and so I've done, completed all the paperwork for the stakeout, for a raffle license, so we can do, you have to have one, even if you're only doing 50-50, you have to have a raffle license, as well as our $5.00 raffle prices. Now, if you're just giving door prices away, which you all know because you've been there, you're not required, but we do do the raffles. Part of the application process is you have to have a resolution adopted and approved by the local governing body, even if it wasn't the Firefighters Association, if it was anybody else, nonprofit, they would have to come to the Board if they were holding it in our community. So with that being said, I've provided a copy of the resolution to you, and this is our final step, so I need to, we're requesting that the Board approves this resolution on behalf of the Firefighters Association.
So once you have this, we don't have to do it every year, or do we have to...
They weren't real clear with us, Karen, on that, okay, if we have to come back every single year. Steve may be able to comment on that, but the person I talked to in Lansing wasn't really crystal clear.
My understanding is you do.
So, we would probably come back, in this case, every April, instead of waiting, because it takes eight to 10 weeks for this to be processed. But I sent everything else ahead of time, telling them that we don't meet until, you know, first Monday of June. And she said, "Go ahead, forward everything along with your application fee, and as soon as you get the Board's approval, forward the resolution to me."
Working with the Water Warriors and Special Olympics of Michigan, what I have heard is each one of us that holds an event, it could be all in the same Macomb County, but if I hold a 50-50 this week, I have to have one. And if my, another member of my organization has one next week, they have to come in. So it's by event, I think.
Yeah.
So it would probably next year you have to come again.
And then there's rules if you do pre-sales, there's different rules if you want to sell online or out of state. We're only selling like we always have at the door for 50-50, as well as our raffle prices.
So the churches, when they do a 50-50, are the bingo things?
Absolutely. Bingo is a whole separate license that anybody who does a 50-50 has to have, and they give out more than $250 in one day, you have to have a State of Michigan raffle license. Apparently, it's been in place for a little while. Okay, we just became aware of it, so we're going to make sure that we follow everything down the line.
Attorney Joffrey, do you have no problem with this?
No.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion that we allow the Lennox Fire Department to have the, our governing body, resolution for charitable gaming license for this year.
Support. Motion by Treasurer...
$50.
I'm sorry, pardon?
I'm sorry, Mr. Patsy asked me a question.
Motion by Treasurer Adenbacher, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions or discussion?
He said that the license was $50.
I'm sorry, sir.
He said the license is $50.
Yes.
Just wanted to make you understand that this license is being obtained by the Lennox Township Firefighters Association.
Correct, at the department, the Firefighters Association.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much for both items, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
What's the date of that again?
1/6.
Thank you.
Smart contract renewal request. Mr. White, sixth.
Good evening. Again, tonight, the Board is scheduled to consider the approval of the annual smart transfer of municipal credit to Richmond Lennox EMS for the fiscal year, the smart fiscal year of 2017. These are the funds that we use to operate the small shuttle vehicles that provide transportation for various medical treatment and other community-related needs as well. Anybody can use the smart vehicle at any time, it is public transportation. That means there is no exclusions to anyone using the vehicle. It can be used by people who have medical needs and appointments, but it can be used by somebody who needs to get to work, if that's the, if that's what, if that's what folks need. I always share with folks, we talk about SMART, that it is also, because it's public transportation, it's not private transportation. What I mean by that is probably one of the single things I often hear is, when we have somebody on the smart buses, geez, there was somebody else on it with me. And, and we explain to them that we might pick up more than one person going the same direction at the same time, and drop them off, you know, in order of their destinations, if you will. So it's not, it's not an individual cab service, it's not a chauffeur, you know, operation. It is, it is, like I say, public transportation, and it's for the greater good of all of our citizens to use. So with that, we're just asking that the Board approve the transfer of the smart funds to Richmond Lennox EMS to continue that service. The very back page of the Board's report, if you'd like to take a brief look at that, you'll see that we actually ran, because I'll be in front of a lot of Boards over the next couple of weeks as they review their contracts, you'll see we ran a listing of all of the transportation provided in your community over the past, over the past 12 months, just we ran it May of last year through May of current year, and the number of riders in Lennox Township was 1,380.
For the year?
For the year. Total, just to give the idea, since the gentleman asked, total for all the communities we serve, we have a number of community ride the service to, we transported just over 30,000 people, 30,285 total people on the shuttle buses last year.
Any other questions for Mr. White?
Uh, they're, you pay for it, so I don't really like to say anything's free, but you pay a millage to SMART. Everybody that lives in Macomb County pays a millage to SMART that is just right about one mil in total, and you pay that to SMART, that's the bus company people. They give that money back to our communities because we don't have big buses up here that operate, so they give that money back to our communities, and our communities then give it to us to operate those little buses with. So when you actually ride them, there's no cost to you. There's no cost the day you ride.
You can call up to pick you up at my door?
You can call up to pick you up at your door. I'll make sure you have the phone number before I leave.
The gentleman's got hit on the road riding his bike to work, and he's in a hospital. Mangling them up.
Sure. I'll make sure you have that number before I leave.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we approve the transfer to Richmond Lennox EMS of $5,738 in municipal credits and $11,620 in community credits.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Churchy, and authorizing me to sign it also, correct?
There we go. Yes, I was just mentioning that we need to approve the contract.
Yep.
And I have in my motion to also approve the contract.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, thank you. I'll have this tonight for you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2016-2017 water supply user rates, Mr. Saif.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the time of the year where we look at our rates and make recommendations for increase or decrease or keep the same rates, so. The water rates this year, we're looking at a 3% annual increase, and I believe the Board had my letter and the calculations. Again, this is the same procedure, we get the charges from GLWI this year, not DWSD anymore, and we just add 10% for the township portion, and we issue our rates. Very simple math.
Any other questions for Mr. Saif?
Yes, sir.
You got a 3% increase or 10% increase? 3% from GLWI, and the township portion is 10%, just like every year.
There's no longer Detroit Water Sewer Department, it's Great Lakes Water Authority.
So for the record, we are recommending an increase for this year fiscal year 2016-2017 from $51.3, $51.30 to $52.90 per thousand cubic feet.
Typically, all of our costs, we've typically done with pass-through costs, correct?
Pass-through.
That means we don't typically tack on any extra money, we tack on whatever the increase is being brought to us and relay that to our customers, the same amount, without putting any in on top of it. This is ready for Mr. White, too. Jan, if he has to leave, I don't know if he had to leave, but...
Make a motion that we approve the water increase from $51.30 to $52.90 per cubic foot for the fiscal year 2016-2017.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. 2016-2017 wastewater disposal user rates, Mr. Saif.
And similar to the water, we are recommending a change, actually not a change for the sewer rates, this year we have a slight decrease, but we are recommending maintaining the same rate to cover the deficiency in the funding for the sewer system.
And the deficiency is what?
The loans that we're still paying for the...
The North Grange Interceptor?
North Grange, yeah.
All right, then I have a problem with not decreasing it because the North Grange Interceptor is paid for from the country acres fund, that's how it was set up when we approved, running it down, it's not being paid for by the resident.
That's one portion, and also, we don't have enough users on the system, that's why we're trying to keep a little bit of a reserve in the rate. So basically, if we are... Right now, we have a... The rate is 114.10 per thousand cubic feet, and if we, if we consider a decrease, it will go down to 102 per thousand cubic feet. And...
My own comment, I would hate, hate to decrease and then surprise our residents with a large increase down the road. I'd rather maintain it the way it is and keep everybody going the way it is, instead of, like I said, surprising them with one huge increase down the road that covers some of these costs.
It's always...
I want to make it as manageable as possible for our residents.
Normally, always, every year, we get, we get hit with an increase. This year, just because of the lookback was eliminated from DWSD, that portion of the rate dropped, and that's why we're looking at, it's less than 10%.
Yeah, 3%, we're talking, some of these communities are getting some astronomical increases, and I just don't want anybody getting any surprises with that down the road with some, some huge increases.
So that's another reason, if we maintain the same rate this year, next year, obviously, you're going to be looking at an increase. So if we drop it, whatever that percentage is, 7%, and then next year, we get another 7, then we're looking at a 14% increase rather than half of that.
That would concern me.
I'd rather see the residents have $120 in their pocket for the year.
Yeah, I'd like to find a way, I mean, we don't have to lower it down to 102, but somewhere in the middle, at least gives the residents that use the sewer some kind of break. I mean, we're already given, raising the water rates. So why can't we low, for once, lower the sewer rates? Every year, it's up and up and up.
I would not recommend kind of splitting it in the middle, either go the full decrease or maintain the same rate. So if you want to decrease it this year, just go down to 102.
It's our total number of users on our, on our sewer line, Mr. Saif.
Not much. We estimate by flow, it's not per...
Well, I mean, just to give everybody an idea of users. Where are we looking? I think Cam?
160. Cam? How many users do we have, 160? 170.
So is it 170 households are being built for sewer, or is it so many, so many commercials?
I thought we were reading around 15 to 20.
170 is accounts, you know, so we have a few large user accounts that count for one, namely, like the manufacturing home communities. Now, what we're talking about here with the sanitary district, specifically with the residential, we're talking about a very few, like four or five.
I thought our total was around 15 as far as total users.
Right, but the majority of them being...
So just, just to give everybody an idea of the scale of this, we have a sewer line that runs from 26 Mile Road to 31 Mile Road, we have 15 customers roughly. So that's one of our biggest problems in creating revenue for these, for this line.
And so if we have 15, approximately 15 residents using the sewer line, how many residents are using the water?
Approximately. Of those 15? Well, including, because how our population, or I'm sorry, how our system is sized, we do have to count for the inmates at Macomb Regional Prison, so we're right around 32, 3400 population on our system.
Approximately, how many from here?
Now, as far as the 15 sanitary connections, you know, we're only looking at four or five of those being residential connections. All the other ones are commercial connections.
Because I'm just trying to find a way, I mean, we've been increasing it somehow, you know, every year, it's a pass through, I understand that. You know, if we're increasing their water, I'm trying to find a way to get, at least give them some kind of break in sewer, but if it's not used, majority, you know, it's not used by residents, it's not saving any residents money, it's maybe saving some businesses money, but, or the big company, you know, like the big park, but...
And these are rates proposed to us that we just...
Correct, we've seen these rates, we, we worked the formula.
Correct. Based on peak and off-peak usage, which we have management programs we put in place to try to keep those numbers down as much as we can. We've instituted those programs, so we're trying to save any way possible. But it's affecting, I think when some people think about it, they think the township as a whole, and it's, it's 15 customers, basically, and we're talking a 3%. Like I said, my biggest fear is to, to take that down right now, and then to hit... Like I said, my biggest fear is to take that down right now and then to hit them with a large amount in a year, like Mr. Safe said, it could be 10% then higher, rather than keep them on a smaller, incremented scale that's given to us by the GLWA. I just think it could be, that could be a shock, because somebody would have to pay 300 more a month than 100 a month.
Does this include Riverbrook?
No, Riverbrook is on the new haven system.
Okay, so 26 miles.
I just don't want to give, I don't want them to have false expectations on...
So yeah, you're having roughly the two miles on 26 mile road, and then everything crashes here. Correct, those are the only areas that have sanitary service at this time.
Sir, you were saying, if I understood you right, if we wanted to give them a break, we should either go with the lowest one or what we are right now, and why are you saying that?
Correct, because those are defendable, we can calculate those rates. Kind of split them in the middle, there's no...
Justification?
No justification to be in the middle.
I have a question for you also, too, based on that. Are you saying to apply this to our commercial customers too?
One rate for everybody.
See, that's an issue there.
We can't have different rates.
Oh, yeah, I knew that, that's what I asked, who was involved?
It's not specific, so it's less than that number, and it's, our commercial accounts are large revenue.
Well, I'd like to see the North Graciate Interceptor not included in this formula when you put it, because it's not being paid for by the water sewer, and it's not being paid for by the residents, by the commercial. That's just my opinion. It's being paid for by funding that was set aside and talked about when it was run.
We can change them to the dollar, but this setup's been followed for years. It's basically our cost for the sewer divided by how much we get in charge, how many cubic feet we're getting charged from the county. All these components together divided by how many, how much water we, or how much sewage we're being charged for, and we come up with a rate. Simple math again. If the board would like to remove that, we can change them to the dollar.
I would like to add one other piece of information, and I know Cam dealt with this too, also, one of our largest customers, they're budgeted through the state of Michigan, and they have very strict budgetary requirements, and for them possibly to make a 10% shift in their budget could be pretty drastic for them. I know every year, it's small-minded percentages for them, and that's one customer we do not want to lose or have to be considered for a relocation or shutdown. Am I correct in saying that, Cam? There's been issues there before with affordability?
Sure, there's been some discussion that I've read in some news articles, where at Lansing, they've talked about specific sites, eliminating and condensing and even turning it over to private firms to run. And I haven't heard of anything being discussed as far as our location here in the township, but I know it's always a possibility.
Our consumer price index right now, I believe, is 1.06, or right around that. So I can see them increments every year being understandable, and 3% with a 2% margin is normal for them to absorb over the year, but like I said, I'm just very concerned of hitting them, like Mr. Safe said, with something that could be, you know, double-digit. That would affect their whole budget. Because of the amount of miles they use, that's a large, large-use customer.
Again, somebody mentioned about $10 per month. This is just an estimate, again. We use the water bill to estimate for the sewer, and so some homes, they don't use a thousand cubic feet a month. It's, again, it's just an average estimate, and we know these days that everybody's watching their consumption. So my personal opinion, the residential accounts will not get affected that much, the commercial ones will be, but again, it's up to the board, the board's budget and the rate.
And I think maybe that the difference between the two should be transferred over to the PTA fund for payment back of the North Graciate Interceptor. We're not going to change the rate.
So the current rate right now is 114.10?
Correct.
And that's what you're proposing to leave it at?
Yeah, so basically, though, everything else has continued to go up, we're not raising it at this time, so no increase.
But now can we do what Jody mentioned, some of the difference there? The money started going back to the PTA fund, because as years go on, that's going to be decreasing too, it has in the past years, and at some point in time, it won't be there
I don't know, Mr. Bailey would have to be consulted on that revenue part of it.
But then again, it's not a whole lot, it's going to make any kind of dent in that.
Especially if the thing is all...
Right, right.
Normally, even if you exhaust the debt, you would still have to build up your reserve fund. Right now, we have almost still new sewer, but, you know, we run into problems even with new sewers, so we don't have any mechanism right now to reserve any fund for any emergency issues.
And that needs to be corrected as well.
So, you know, that's another reason for you not to decrease the rates, just to build up the reserve, and to add to that, part of this saw grant budget allocation, there is a portion of that, the state is paying us to look at rate methodology for the next 20, 25 years and build up your rate methodology, how you're going to pay for all these sewers, and for any improvements on the system and how you take care of your system from this point forward. So part of that will be a reserve fund, but it's going to be a portion of the rate that we need to build up. You know, this sewer is about 10 years old, almost, rated for 50, 60, but who knows, we may get a break next year. We don't have any reserve to cover that. So we're going to look at all that.
Now, would that money be put into like a reserve fund, or is it just in the water sewer budget? I mean, where does it go? If we're not paying it out, is it being held, will it be held in reserve?
Normally, it would be in the water sewer fund, but I know the setup was different, and the sewer got paid from a different fund, just because the water sewer fund couldn't cover it. And to add to that, the county sold the bond, not latched on this, so we're paying back the county. So this should be worked out internally, how this fund would be managed.
I mean, actually, you know, we brought this up for several years now, that part of the money should be going into, and it's called reserved, which means it can only be used for repairs, and so that it can't be touched for anything else. But there's some work that needs to be done on these sewer ordinance in order for us to be able to do that. So it was brought up again this year, and that needs to be done.
Absolutely.
Yeah, seeing as we're going to have that little bit of surplus, it should be started with that.
But first, things first, it has to be done before we can do it. We can't just set it up, it's got to be done.
Can you repeat your recommendation, please, Mr. Safe?
Yes, and just a further comment on that, as part of the saw grant, we're planning to do that this year, Jody, is to look at the methodology and come up with the rates, and that will include the reserve and the emergency fund. So it will be done this year, but we haven't got to that point yet, we're just going through the steps. So going back to my recommendation, from my letter to the board, we are recommending maintaining the same rate from last year at $114.10 per thousand cubic feet.
Thank you.
I'll make that my motion.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Post.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safe.
Thank you.
Clerk Keith, backup electrical inspector request? This request is through the building department with the input of Mr. Osterman and Mr. Lemieux Applicant...
Make a motion that we approve... Grant Frata as a backup electrical inspector for Lennox Township.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comments?
Evening, Curry.
Hi. Curry Strauss, 27 mile. We've had a lot of problems in the last two months with truck traffic. I understand they're working at the trailer park at the end of the road, but these trucks, I mean, the gravel trains, everything, and they're running every day, even on the weekend, and it seems like it took forever to get the road bladed and chlorided and everything, and they're just pounding it to death. And there's a lot of gravel trains hauling, and one of the problems we got is a couple of commercial businesses, as far as I'm concerned, that bought down there and they're landscaping, and those trucks and trailers are in, hauling out all the time. So I think it should be looked at.
Are they used through like normal business hours or all hours?
All hours, even on Saturdays. It seems like it's really happening Saturdays with the trailer park on the end of the road
Well, we'll contact the sheriff, like we've done in the past, and get that information from you.
Okay.
Appreciate you letting us know.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Public comment? You don't want to...
Motion to adjourn at 8:35.
Support. Motion by Treasurer Adenbacher, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Please adjourn. Thank you.